Hi, I'm Doug Ross, editorial page editor at The Times. Here for an endorsement interview with Republican Porter County Council candidates, and I should say this is in District 3, candidates Karen Conover, the incumbent, and Russell Chet, nicknamed Barone. Welcome. We also have in the room Robert Blaskowitz, Assistant Managing Editor, and fellow editorial board member Debbie Henson, who is General Manager for Porter County. Now, we should talk about the obvious question. What are your qualifications? Karen?
I have been on the county council two terms as an at-large councilman. I took a six-year sabbatical and the Third District Council seat became available, and I've been on the council for the past six years. I understand the county's finances, its 90-plus budgets, and I've worked in local government all of my adult life. I've worked for the city of Alperizo for 22 years, so I do understand local government and its funding.
Okay.
I have an extensive business background in finance, sales and marketing. I'm getting up to speed on the governmental side of accounting, which is fund accounting. It's quite different than GAAP accounting that I deal with on day-to-day basis. I've been successful in my business career. I realize that decisions have to be made on a daily basis that are often difficult and affect lots of different people. And I think what I would bring to the table is my business experience and the ability to make those decisions in regard to what has to be done. The county has an incredible deficit at the moment, and a lot of decisions are going to have to be made. It's going to require a lot of cooperation as well. Being in sales and marketing, as you all know, well Debbie would know, you have to get a lot of consensus on a lot of different issues. You've got to deal with a lot of different personalities, figure out who's in charge, who's not in charge, who's willing to work, and who's going to do that work, and who's not willing to work. And in government, you're going to have all those situations. I've seen that as I've been in a lot of the different meetings that I've been attending, and I think I can add something to that. And that's why I'm qualified. I've never been in a governmental position before, never been in an elected position before, and I think that'll have some merit. I don't have any ties to county government. I don't do business with county government, so I think I'll be completely objective. And I think it's a fresh perspective, so that's what I have to offer.
Okay. We should talk about that deficit. How do you address it?
How do you address it? Well, you're going to have to balance the budget. There's a report, it's out, the Umba Report, I believe, that mentions there's a couple things that you're going to have to do. Got some notes here. First thing you're going to have to do is enhance the budget process. I believe meeting once a month is not appropriate for a decision like this. You're probably going to have to meet more than once a month. Probably going to have to create some financial reporting mechanisms. When I run a business, I have to watch my cash flow on a daily basis. When you're looking at a $40 or $50 million entity, boy, you're going to have to be watching that, probably at the beginning of the morning, the end of the day. Probably need some budget workshops over the summer. I'd probably make better use of the Budget Director, Vicki Urbannick. Want to know more than what's going on on a monthly basis, again, on a daily basis. And then create probably a three- to five-year operations plan, looking out more than just one year. Instead of being reactionary to everything, be proactive, have a plan. That's what I would do. And without having any kind of financial reporting mechanism in place, I couldn't fully answer your question now, Mr. Ross. We'd have to really dig into that. I mean, that's a very lengthy question.
Okay. Karen?
Well, I believe our red ink shouldn't be as red as it is. Additional appropriations last year were not submitted to the Department of Local Government Finance in a timely manner, and that's why the state cut us another $2.8 million. In addition, we also had $3.3 million in tax appeal refunds, which should have triggered an excess levy appeal. Hiring new jailers to the cost of about $1.5 million. These circumstances, along with the property tax caps, have hurt our bottom line. Moving forward, we must deal with it. We can find excess in appropriations. We can transfer expenses from general fund into non-general fund accounts. We can make further cuts, and at the end of the day, we can also use reserve funds to fully comply with what the state requires of us. We have many opportunities here, and I guess that'll probably go into other questions. We need to solve the immediate, and we can solve the immediate, and we need to be looking forward to the future.
Okay, well, let's talk about the opportunities.
A couple of opportunities, and they're huge opportunities. Number one, we have hospital proceed money. We have roughly $160 million. We need to carefully invest and divest that money, and we have the opportunity here to help ourselves and our community, and in essence, all of our residents. There's probably as many good ideas out there as there is proceed money, and now is the time to overcome petty bickering and do something grand. Everybody doesn't have to like everyone, but we need to come together and make a difference because that's what we're elected to do. We all have to agree on how this money is invested. And we had the Hal Rinder Report. We know legally what we can do through setting up an endowment, using an existing foundation or a combination of both. And something else that I've been talking to other constituents about is, why don't we offer to the redevelopment commissions of our county interest-free loans to do their projects, to cut the roads, to extend the sewers, to have job-ready sites, shovel-ready sites, I believe is the buzzword, so we can attract business? And in turn, maybe they can start releasing TIF revenue that could help our bottom line with not only the county's general fund, but the other taxing entities' general funds. But that we can do in conjunction with working with our local communities.
Okay.
There's a lot of opportunities. There's supposedly a jobs cabinet that's operating within the council and the commissioners. I don't believe they've met within a year. I would work with members of the council, probably would take $100 million and put that into either a foundation that would be controlled by the council itself. The problem with foundations, I've done extensive research on that, I know people that serve on foundations, the foundation board kind of becomes a life of its own, and the original intent, when you create a foundation board, is often lost. I think that money should be locked up for generations and not spent, the $100 million. That would leave us with roughly $60 million left over to deal with. We've got reports here. I'll show you here. Here's a Porter County three- to five-year capital improvement plan that was dated on the March of 2011. We've got a Porter County Animal Shelter here, a report that we paid for, March 2012. Okay? Implementing any of these programs will create a lot of jobs. We could work with the Construction Technology Institute. They would tell us when we submit these reports just how many living wage jobs that we could create. I would guess it's anywhere between 600 and 700 in the county. These are real opportunities with $60 million to put people to work, living wage jobs that are continuous jobs. A lot of this building, the three- to five-year capital improvement plan, are continual jobs. They're not just building a roundabout or an overpass. I mean, these are real sustainable jobs. And what we'll do in the process of that is not only put Porter County residents to work, you're going to refill your seated fund. That's the hidden gem right here, okay? The TIF districts and all that, you know, where is all the economic development that we've created through the TIFs or through these tax abatements? I don't see them. The hospital tax abatements, a mess. There's no development up there besides the hospital. So, I'd like to try something else. We have the money to do it. We don't have to lever ourselves to do that. Leverage is bad. The county's got enough debt, you know, as we know it right now. So, I mean, there's great opportunities there, and I'd like to further investigate that. In terms of giving the money away to a community foundation, I think people must know that you are gifting that money away, okay? If you've ever run money, and I've traded commodities at the Chicago Mercantile Exchange, you have to understand when you run a fund, you always keep the principal. You're always guarding the principal. When you gift that money to a foundation, that principal's gone forever, okay? And I can tell you another thing with finances, there are no guarantees in finances. Someone that's going to guarantee you 5% and you're going to take that and believe that, I would be very cautious about that. So, I want to protect that money, okay? So, that's basically, there's a lot of opportunities. That's why I'm excited about running also. So, we've got the projects right here. I mean, these are two of them. There's a drainage, a DLZ drainage report for the South County. There's $30 million right there. So, we paid for these reports, and my question would be, what have we done with them? This report's three years old, this one's a couple of years old. No reason we don't have an animal shelter also. Be simple, we've got the property right now, so. Those are some of the things I'd like to look at. I mean, I could go on and on, but do you want me to?
Well, we should probably give Karen a chance to talk about these reports, and, you know, what direction you think the county should go with them.
As far as the drainage, we've identified $40 million in drainage projects, and we have been just nickel and diming them. And I don't mean nickel and diming them. A million dollars out of this fund, a million dollars out of that fund, and we're not making a lot of headway. The commissioners currently are working with Umba to, it's not just outside of the incorporated, it's also these conservancy districts. I, as a city resident, am paying $120 a year in a stormwater management fee. There's a lot we can do if we can put a fee structure on outside of incorporated, those that are not paying currently a stormwater management fee. We can address that, free up some money that we're already spending on that, because we need to start making a lot of headway on the drainage projects. We've done what we can do, but there's other funding mechanisms to not only do that, but free up money currently used for drainage out of our current budgets. As far as an animal shelter goes, yes, we need a new animal shelter, and I know of plans that are just being talked about right now. We have property. Could we swap a property with another entity? We want to make the location kind of central to include Porter and South County because portage also, rather, portage also needs to be tied in with an animal shelter. I'd like to see an animal shelter be destination for a family to go, maybe after church brunch and whatnot, a place to visit, a place to pick out a pet. It's an important, it's an important thing that we do because we are a no-kill shelter, and we have a lot of good animals that we need adopted, and the location is currently insufficient.
Okay. I'll bet you'd like to follow up on that.
On the animal shelter, or, it sounds like a revenue, expanding the commercial tax base, what Karen's talking about, and it sounds like a new tax. I don't think that we have a revenue problem in the county. I think that we have a spending problem. So, I'm against any new taxes. I don't know what, citizen of Porter County that wants another tax. You know, we've got an income tax now. There should be enough money there. Maybe we could talk to the commissioners about some of the seated revenue. I'd like to talk to them about that. I think we're one of the only counties in the state that doesn't utilize seated revenue for their general funds. So, I mean, why is that? Why is there a special projects fund for the commissioner? That would be my question. So, I think there's money there for that, but no, I'm not for raising any new taxes. We have enough of those.
And Karen, what do you think is the best use of the seated money?
The seated money has primarily been used for projects, what we talked about earlier, drainage projects. There's a lot of projects on the commissioner's plate right now. I think because of tax caps and the squeeze going on there, we have, the commissioners have come to the table and offered a couple million dollars to help shore up our budget woes, so to speak. And as far as, we have a lot of money there, you know, things, we just need to continually cut, cut, cut. Some of these budgets per department, accepting employee costs, have been flatlined for many, many years. County government is rather complex. We have a court system to run. We have a jail to run. We have an animal shelter. We have a 911 center. We don't have a lot of overlapping services here in Porter County. We don't have municipal jails, municipal animal shelters, municipal PSAPs all over the place. These are county functions. We've cut down on a lot throughout the years to make it just a one-tax entity system. And we do have to operate, and we do have to fund, and we have to offer the service.
Okay.
In terms of the jail, I mean, if you look at how the problems, and it goes back to planning, I think, there needs to be more planning. I've been hearing for 10 years about the overcrowding at the jail, and that's the third pod that you hear about. It was $400,000, I believe, that you're looking at. Well, I mean, it took 10 years to solve that problem and finally fund that. And at the same time, when you look at priorities, I mean, we're funding the opera house at the tune of almost $1.5 million a year in operational costs. So, I think there could be a conversation and perhaps even an argument to be made over what is a priority? The jail, okay, which has repercussions that are legal, okay, in terms of the federal government, or an opera house? I love the opera house, but we have to make a priority. And if you have a three- to five-year comprehensive plan, I think you won't be proactive, you won't run into, you know, situations like this and funding situations. So, that's what I would like to see, just more planning, which would involve more meeting, and again, you go back to the Umba Report, which suggests that. The Umba Report also mentions that we're too reliant on property taxes, okay? There's not enough of a mix between property taxes and income taxes. You know, we need more of that seated money within the budget, that's my opinion, and we're going to have to talk to the commissioners about it. And, you know, I'm sure they're going to want to talk about it. I know a couple of the commissioners personally. So, more has to be done and more meetings with them. So, that's what I would try and do.
Now, there've been some, there's been talk of kind of a conflict between some of the council members and the commissioners, so how would you address that? Karen?
Well, we have significant challenges facing our county, and we have in the past. If we come together and put parochialism aside, we can meet those challenges to get Porter County moving in the right direction. This is what we have to do. This is what we need to do. Public debate is healthy, and I personally have been disheartened by some of the contention this that has gone on at county council meetings. It seems that some people just don't plain like other people, and just because somebody has a bad idea and you don't like them, it doesn't mean it's a bad idea. We need to work together. Our commissioners are, in essence, are mayors. I recognize that I'm a county council person, and communication, cooperation, and teamwork is a real critical, critical thing that needs to be worked on.
Okay. Chet?
You know, obviously, I'm not on the county council, so I've witnessed in the meetings, I've been to the commissioners' meetings, I've witnessed some of the behavior, so I don't, you're going to have, there's a problem there evidently, and I talked to some of the council members. There's, you know, you have personalities, you have egos, you have a culture of power there, and it's all going to be worked out. I mean, I deal with that every day. I mean, there's bullies, there's people with more money than you, there's larger corporations, there's people that have personal agendas, and it's all going to be worked out. There's not an answer for that, Doug. I wish I did have an answer. I'd be elected right now, probably, if there was a one-word answer for it, but...
Can I add to that?
Sure.
Some years ago, this county faced some harder times. We lost Bethlehem and Midwest Steel. The difference between then and now, everybody worked together back then, all office holders, all department heads. We all came together to get through that crisis. I know the numbers. We need to dig deeper, and we're moving in the right direction, and we need to keep our, we need to keep our finger on the pulse, but we have to get beyond personalities here. And this is not political. It's personality-driven.
Okay.
Yeah, getting back to personnel, county personnel, we saw recently Bob Wuchlinski kind of made a splash with some cuts that he made in his department. Where do you see the personnel levels being for the county in terms of numbers of employees, and where do you think that should go?
Well, I understand there's 750 employees total between full and part-time. Again, I don't know, I would need some financial reporting, real-time, see where the money's going, where are the problems, what are the needs? I mean, obviously, the health and welfare of the residents of the county are paramount, so I mean, there's some places you can't cut. There might have to be some places you might have to enhance the budget. You know, I really don't know. I mean, when you're looking through the budget and the availability of some of these budget numbers is hard to get at. You know, as a candidate, you can't just walk into these offices and demand, you know, annual budget figures, okay? So, I can't answer that right now.
I think first and foremost, and I've been advocating this for years, but I think we're there. We need an HR person for Porter County government. We do have 750 employees. We do have an HR consultant report. The report is sensitive. We're arranging a meeting to meet an executive session with the commissioners so we can start to act. The lives of 750 people are at stake here. There's insurance benefits. There's a time-off policy. There's closed holidays. All this needs to be addressed. If we're to mirror the private sector as far as running Porter County more like a business, then maybe we need to consider paying our employees a fair market wage. Can we implement early retirement? And, you know, there's some people that maybe want to leave a couple of years earlier. Insurance, time-off policies, closed holidays, these are commissioner-driven issues, but I think the commissioners are amenable to look at everything. And again, back to, we have a court system. These employees are under the jurisdiction of the judge's plans. We have a 24 operational jail, 24, you know, 24/7 police protection. We have an animal shelter that isn't closed for Lincoln's birthday. They're open pretty much seven days a week. We have 40-hour departments. We have 35-hour-a-week departments. We have to set into motion something that's going to work for everybody, and it's a rather complicated process, and it needs to be addressed. And the first step is, the commissioners are in receipt of this HR consultant report, and we need to be mindful of that. And the first thing I think we need is an HR director for our 750-employee operation.
Russ, you thought so?
HR director. From what I understand, we've been talking about the county hiring an HR director for 10 years. What I also understand is the commissioners, and Karen can correct me if I'm wrong, they could hire one tomorrow. So, why haven't we hired one? 750 employees, it's crazy not to have one. I would just tell the commissioners and the council, hire an HR director. Let's do it at the next meeting instead of talking about it. I believe it'd be very simple to do. So, the work rules, what I understand from the work rules, when you look into the benefits, and I was at the council, commissioners' meeting when Mike Anton was there, who's your insurance administrator for the county, we are self-insuring at the current moment. That doesn't make the best financial sense, in my opinion. Most of your large corporations don't self-insure anymore. Hardly any of them do. And if I look at a benefit breakdown, what we're paying our employees, actually, the benefit cost, a single employee's paying about $100 a month for health insurance. A family pays $250 a month. I would ask any Porter County resident, those numbers are very low, okay? You're going to have to offer a different program where there's different levels of care, like everyone else does. We've got to, if you want to mirror the private sector, like Karen said, you're going to have to start doing things like that because it's incredibly expensive. So, the work rules have to be worked through. The amount of holidays paid, I understand there's 14 paid holidays. That seems like a lot to me. If you want to mirror the private sector, we're way off on all that. So, I think there's a lot of things that could be gained from just looking at those programs alone. I mean, if the commissioners want an HR director, they can have one. So, I would ask John Evans, and why don't we have an HR director? So, I think that's pretty simple.
Okay. Any questions, Debbie? Robert?
Let's flip real quick and talk about the Ethics Commission. What's your stand on that?
I think, I commend the commissioners for joining the Fair Ethics Commission, and I do look forward to the training. I think everybody has something to glean from going through the training, something that maybe they didn't think about. I've been through that training through my job with the city of Alperizo. We've had ethics ordinance and ethics training. I mean, it's something as simple as your telephone at your desk is public equipment. So, if you're on it for personal phone calls, that's wrong. I mean, it's just reinforcing the little things to the huge things, and I think it would benefit our entire workforce.
What do I think of the Ethics Commission? I was at the meeting when the commissioners voted on the Ethics Commission. I understood it costs $5,000 to join, and it's a $3,000 annual cost. Why do we have to pay to know what the ethics are? I mean, my parents taught me ethics a long time ago. I think ethics, I thought it was ridiculous.
We haven't talked about drugs at all, and of course, you know, this is one of the big problems facing the county. So, as a county council person, how would you direct the funding to address it? Karen?
Well, some years ago, I and a former sheriff and some concerned citizens and Bob Taylor, the head of our narcotics unit, we started a drug coalition. That was in full force for about 10 years. Since that point in time, we've created a drug court, and there's been a couple of other halfway houses through the private sector that the county has helped to get their initial startup costs started, and they're fully funded and operational on their fees and their fundraising. I think something very, very remarkable, and to be in a room with county commissioners, county council, prosecutors, school corporations, and the private sector, and empower Porter County was created. The funding for that is through the, we'll call them donations, through local governments, and I think we're going to be making some headway on that. It's not only a matter of having some opportunities for those that are addicted, it's also a matter of education. And I've said from the get-go, we teach our children at a very young age not to touch the stove because they'll get burned, not to ride their bicycle in the street without watching for cars because they could get hit by a car. And education needs to start very, very early and start in the house, and have the same residual, whether it be through your church, through your parks, through everything message to our young, all the way through the high school. Drugs are bad. Nobody, nobody that I've ever visited with ever planned on being addicted. But these drugs are strong. One use of certain kinds of drugs can make you an addict for the rest of your life.
Okay.
The war on drugs, I mean, we've seen it at the federal level, we've seen it at the local level, we've thrown a lot of money at it. The successes, I don't know. I don't see the successes with that. Something has to change. If I were on the county council, I would probably want to talk to the sheriff, have a conversation with him about attacking the supply of the drugs, how it's coming into the community. Education, all that's great. I mean, we have that in place right now, but I think we have to do something different in terms of law enforcement with that. And obviously, I don't know what they're doing at the law enforcement level. I have some idea. I do know some undercover police officers at the federal level and some at the local level. I know a little bit what's going on. What they seem to be troubled about is the flow of drugs into the community, especially hard drugs, and the price of it at the street level. The quantities and the quality, the quality is better than it's ever been when they find it, and the price is down. So, you know, as a commodity trader, I look at that, and there's a lot of supply. So, there's a problem with that. I mean, the education and everything else hasn't stemmed what I think is the real issue. Now, how do we tackle that? I don't, boy, that's a real big question. That would take hours of meetings and probably more undercover operations.
To add to that point, through the county, for, in order for local law enforcement to have an officer, they can't just be without an officer off their local police departments. But the county's been assisting local communities to have officers in the narcotics unit. It's a 24/7 operation. It's a dangerous operation, and not only are we looking at things locally, we're looking at things through HIDA. It's a regional, you know, are there drugs coming out of Gary? Yes. Are there drugs coming out of Chicago? Yes. It's working with all law enforcements, from the... It's working with all law enforcements, from the federal level to the state level, to the county level, to the local level. And are we going to stop the flow of drugs? We can only, we can only hope. But again, I go to early, early education. I've tried to also educate parents that one of your child's best friends is probably going to offer them drugs. And how do we break down that barrier? Sometimes a parent doesn't know if their child has a drug problem until they're into full-blown addiction. Preventive and law enforcement and treatment. It's a three-pronged component.
Okay. We have time for one final question I think we should ask, simply, you know, and quickly, what have we not asked that we should have?
Probably decision to run. Why did I decide to run? I have two children in the Valparaiso Community Schools, Russell, who's 12, Thomas is 10. At Memorial School, I've watched over the years, they have many fundraisers that go on. They have lists that come home, they're sent home the first day of school, I mean, just general school supplies. And I always ask that question, why do, you know, where are the lack of funds? Where does that stem from? And, you know, upon further investigation, I've decided I think it's the TIF funding that are hurting our schools. The Porter County schools, the Valparaiso Community Schools are a gem, the very reason why my parents moved to this community. We came out of Chicago. And I think that we're, through the redevelopment commissions and the TIF funding, that we're not funding our schools properly. I think there's a reason why we've had so many superintendents in the last three to four years, why our, the financial director left within a year or so. I think we have to address that issue. I think the TIF funding should be more equitable in its distribution of its funds and to all the governmental bodies and entities. So, that's the main reason, and I'd like to bring that out in the open through my candidacy and hopefully when I'm on the council, because I think the schools are the most important thing that we have in this community. And like Karen was saying, it starts at an early age, educating our kids on the dangers of drugs and the importance of an education. So, you know, we need the funds to do it. There's a disconnect there. And I'm all for growth. I'm a businessman. I understand tax abatements and TIFs and how they can work and how they can be helpful and useful. What I think has happened, though, is that we've overreached on some of this. And, I mean, who is on the redevelopment commission? I know the mayor is. I mean, that's a good question. Ask people in the community. I don't really know. But there's a lot of money there that's controlled by a few people, and they're kind of deciding who the winners and who the losers are. So, I have a feeling that through the TIF funding, some of the negative consequences are that we're trading jobs. We're trading jobs in the schools that were former school aides for Pratt Industries jobs. That's what I see. So, I'd like to discuss that more and hopefully change it. And it's going to take a lot of work. That's not a simple, that's another complicated problem. But I think through education and educating the citizens, you know, we might make some headway on that. TIPS aren't bad, you know, tax abatements aren't bad, but, you know, let's use them efficiently. You know, it's not a solution. We've got nine TIF districts in Valparaiso, four in the county, that's 13. We have more than anybody. So, that's my reason for running, the schools.
Okay, Karen?
As far as TIF districts, the TIFs that are currently in place were under the old rules. There's new state statute that sets the guidelines for TIFs. Valparaiso has one contiguous TIF currently, and the mayor is not on that committee. The state of Indiana is funding school corporations' general fund. That changed, I think, about six or seven years ago. The county currently does not have a TIF. We're going to have a TIF, and it's considered being a model TIF. 40% will be returned to the various taxing entities. But the school corporations' general funds are supplied, are funded through state formulas. With all that said and done, the city of Valparaiso is also giving challenge grants to Valparaiso Community Schools, to the Washington Township area for those areas that the TIF encroaches, which is sizable amounts of revenue. I know we're facing some challenging times in county government, and through those challenging times, the sky is not falling, and we've been through some tough times. We do have reserve funds. We need to implement the jobs cabinet report. We need to carefully invest and divest our hospital proceed money. We need to work well together, and we need to move forward. And I would ask for your vote and support, and I thank all of you for the format here today.
Okay. Well, I'm afraid that's all the time we have. Again, I'm Doug Ross, editorial page editor, with Karen Conover and Russell Barone, both of them Republican candidates for Porter County Council in District III. Also in the room, Robert Blaskowitz, Assistant Managing Editor, Debbie Ansem, Porter County General Manager. Thank you for viewing.